And whereas Article Five, Section Two E of the Constitution empowers the legislative branch to grant final approval or disapproval of the annual budget prepared by the executive branch. And whereas a budget for the expenditure of pro-trival revenue has been developed by the executive branch for the fiscal year 2014, commencing on October one, 2013, and ending September thirty, 2014, from the following sources of tribal revenue. One, general fund of the pro-tribe, twenty-five million, two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Two, one-oh-seventh judgment fund, two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. Three, indirect cost fund, two million, five-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Total, thirty million, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Whereas the executive branch has presented the attached line item budget for all three branches of the pro-trival government, now therefore be it enacted by the co-trival legislature, Section One, approval of the 2014 fiscal year budget for the expenditure of pro-trival revenue. The attached 2014 fiscal year budget for the operation of the pro-trival government and the expenditure of tribal revenues prepared by the executive branch and reviewed by the legislative branch is hereby approved by the co-trival legislature.
Okay, at this time, for the record, I'd like for you to explain a little bit why we need to keep this in committee, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll do my best for the record. I know there were discussions at the retreat last week about the budget and various budget items. There were also revenue committee meetings on both Thursday and Friday, late into Friday afternoon, discussing the budget for 2014 modifications, additional revenues from Cloud Peak Energy Bonus that we expect next June, and other items. Throughout that time, the CPA had to be out of town on a personal matter, beginning Thursday, about midday on Thursday, and was unable to participate in all those discussions. I think the feeling on the behalf of the finance people that were here, Marlon Passes and Kathleen Adams, was that they were, they really enjoyed the frank and open discussion of all the questions and all the information that was shared regarding the budget. And speaking with the CPA this morning, who just, I think, returned home last night, she would request, respectfully request, another two or three days to be able to digest all those changes, make sure all the numbers add up, review the suggestions and proposals with the chairman, including the revenue committee's recommendation and proposal from late Friday afternoon, so that we make sure everything is, everything fits and everything is correct and accurate and meeting in the minds regarding all the budget matters. I have not spoken further with the chairman this morning. I assume he agrees with that, because we have sent emails back and forth, or I have sent emails anyway, and would request, on behalf of the executive branch, that the body consider recessing regarding the budget now and coming back to that at another special session probably later this week. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, go ahead, Senator Stork.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, secretary members, yes. So basically, what we're hearing here is that we're not gonna, due to the lack of doing, someone not doing their homework, we're all here for, basically, I mean, not for nothing, but you know, this is kind of the primary reason why we even called this, or else I could have been paying my respects, but I'm here today, and that's kind of upsetting to me, you know, on a personal level, but now that's being said. All I'm saying is that with what we're hearing today, as of the end of Business Day, coming into tomorrow, we're on a government freeze and shutdown. There's no budget, right? So basically, we're shut down. Our negligence, basically, on whose part? We're all here. I just, I'm just gonna put that out there, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, would you clear, would you care to answer that, or do you wanna?
Just the last part regarding the government shutdown. We haven't had a chance to look into this carefully in the last couple of days since the events have unfolded. It's like this is not be ready, which greatly apologize for that. I would, though, point out that, as discussed with Jay earlier this morning, the government, tribal government has gone on for a few days into the new fiscal year without shutting down all operations. I think we've been, tried to avoid writing checks off the 2014 budget during that hiatus period, but last year, I think it was October fourth or October fifth, in 2009 budget, it was October eighth before that was approved, and I'm sure there have been a couple others that have gone, well, just a little bit longer. So at least in the past, I think we've avoided shutting down the tribal government immediately on midnight September thirtieth, provided that we get a budget in place within the next week or a few days after that. Again, we can revisit that if necessary, but that is my recollection of how that has worked in the past.
Okay, so at this time, need a motion on the floor to refer the proposed 2014 budget back into the revenue committee. Need a motion on the floor under that. Senator Covers Up?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to refer this back to committee chair later date.
Okay, need a second? Second by Senator, wait a second, Shane, need a question? Question by Senator Jeanie Purdy-Paint, she finally woke up. Yes, so all those in favor, raise your right hand. Fifteen, all those opposed? All those abstaining? One opposed? A few of them abstaining? Okay. The motion has passed to keep this into committee. I'm gonna ask you another question. When do you propose on calling for a special session, Bill, for the 2014 budget? You know, I totally concur with Senator Stork, and we worked hard on this. I mean, and I, and Kristin used to do this. When we came to the budget, every July, she would take a two-week vacation, when she, we needed answers, when we needed answers on some of the questions, she would take a two-week vacation. And I brought that up, not once, but quite a few times with her. And now, Carla, and it was just like, like Senator Stork brought up. I know that there's a couple of funerals, but with all due respect to the funerals, we needed to get to business today, and that's why, I know, I called it. And if they can, I know that, it was personal business. She told us it was personal business that she was gonna head out, and I disagree with that. You know, if she really wanted this budget to be passed, I think she would get on the ball and get it passed. But she has a lack of commitment, the way I look at it, too. And that's what Kristin did, the same thing. She had a lack of commitment. And so, when it comes to special sessions, you wanna call a special session, I mean, let's do the groundwork. And instead of me saying, you know, we're gonna get this special session, and we're doing this out of courtesy, really, until it's ready to go, you know, that's when we should be calling a special session. But regardless of that, we are here because of the 2013 budget as well. We need to get that passed. Okay, go ahead, Senator Stork.
Before you close out on that, I just want to reference the reason why I voted no. For the record, we came here to take care of business. I didn't come here to refer something back to committee. We've got people in, you know, that are hurting in the community, and we could have been there, supporting our own. But now, because, you know, don't get me wrong, a non-member woman is telling us she can't, she telling us, I need some time. We had all this time, and granted, I wasn't here Thursday, nor I was here, wasn't here Friday, but I did receive the updates, the emails. I did receive that information. I went through it myself. I asked questions. I made phone calls. I came here after the meeting on Friday, made a quick report of my meeting up there. I talked with Speaker Gozahead and legal counsel Jay Harris, as well as whoever was here. I did my homework, too. And I was in, I was in, I thought we were in agreement that something was gonna come to the floor if, if anything, we have to date. We can bring something right now, sit down and talk about it, or else, even if we didn't agree to whatever is in this budget today, at least we dissected the discrepancies or the disputes, and we're one step closer. So that is the reason why I voted no. We came here for a reason, and now, I hate to say this, but people that can't even vote are telling us what to do. And I don't like that. I think things need to change, and in the spirit of positive change, somebody needs to stand up for positive change. And if I'm the lone ranger here, then that's fine, but I'll tell you what, we need to bring this out. We need to talk about this. If there's some questions, if there's some confusion, if there needs to be clarification, then by God, there's two tables stuck together right now. We can go into revenue committee right now. We can talk about it. But nobody's here. And it's disappointing. Now, we can take care of other business, that's fine, but all this other business probably could have went to the quarterly session. But today, the last day of the fiscal year, and we're not ready, it's just disappointing, Mr. Speaker, secretary members.
Okay, we will let Carla know when we have that meeting with her, that this will not occur, will occur. Okay, Senator Huligan?
Oh, Mr. Speaker, secretary members of the body. Yeah, we are on September thirtieth, and, you know, previous chairmans, you know, they at least made the effort to meet the deadline. And, you know, I would take high note that, you know, how many people are employed in the finance department over at the executive branch? How many CPAs do we have? How much do we, the tribe pay them? The pro-tribe's money is the one that is paying these non-members. And when we go to finance, we see a lot of people back there. Why are they not working in collaborative effort? And there should be some cross-training if no one doesn't know how to do the job. And, you know, as I said, it is kind of disappointing that it sounds like the executive branch isn't prepared today. And, you know, all we can do is work around it, move forward, and see what we can do to work best with it, but, you know, you know, for the record, it should have been done. It should, they should have been more prepared to come to the branch, because it does take money to do a session. You know, when you get all of us together, you know, we, we have, we go and eat, we could have been saving money today, and, you know, there's people grieving out there. And our staff worked extensively to prepare not only for quarterly but for sessions and within interim committee meetings. And so, you know, our staff are ready, ready to go. It's their duty, but it's like we're coming together just to, you know, we could have, we could have did this on a different day. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Senator Alden.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. Just a, we have a couple of look points. Last week, we had revenue committee meetings a couple of days, and it was actually history-making, the revenue committee meetings we had, because it was the first time the executive came over and actually sat down with us and, and went through the process the way the budget should be done every year about this time. And I agree on everyone, we've kind of done our part in trying to, trying to prepare this special session for get this budget passed. So, I mean, in good faith, working with both branches and keeping this momentum going. So, if you haven't been going across today, let them know that. If you barely get a corner here, give them time under this afternoon, end of the day, while we're here. If not, then we've got the choice to actually pass this, too. So, we worked on it, I know, Thursday and Friday hard, and I give executive credit, too, coming over and working with us. So, that's my suggestion.
Okay, without further ado, let's go to the next, we'll discuss that later. Okay, Bill, one read present to record. And this for the fiscal year 2013 budget modification.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. And the joint action resolution is entitled, quote, "Approval of Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2013 Pro-Tribal Budget to Authorize Expenditure of Bonus Payments from the Track One Coal Lease with Westmoreland Resources, Inc."
Need a motion? Motion, Senator Stork and Senator Covers Up? Seconded by Senator, go ahead, continue.
And the resolution reads as follows. Whereas Article Four, Section Three D of the pro-trival constitution and bylaws requires the executive branch of the pro-trival government to prepare an annual budget for the operation of the tribal government, including separate budgets for the legislative and judicial branches for approval by the legislative branch and the Secretary of the Interior. And whereas Article Five, Section Two E of the Constitution empowers the legislative branch to grant final approval or disapproval of the annual budget prepared by the executive branch. And whereas CLB twelve dash oh five, the revised annual budget for the operation of the pro-trival government and the expenditure of tribal revenue for fiscal year 2013, the quote FY 2013 budget unquote, was approved by the legislature on December twentieth, two thousand and twelve, and by the chairman of the executive branch on December twenty-one, two thousand and twelve. And the said FY 2013 budget did not authorize expenditure of any proceeds from new coal development agreements. And whereas JAR thirteen dash oh three granting final approval of the exploration agreement and coal lease between the pro-tribe of Indians and Westmoreland Resources, Inc., the quote WRI Track One Coal Lease unquote, was approved by the legislature on March sixth, two thousand and thirteen, and by the chairman on March twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. And whereas upon execution of the WRI Track One Coal Lease on March twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, the tribe received an initial bonus payment in the amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars, and the expenditure of such payment was authorized and budgeted by JAR thirteen dash oh three. And whereas pursuant to the escrow agreement approved by JAR thirteen oh three, upon execution of the WRI Track One Coal Lease on March twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, an additional one-point-two million dollars was paid by WRI into an escrow account with First Interstate Bank to be released to the tribe upon approval of the WRI Track One Coal Lease by the Secretary of the Interior or her designee. And whereas upon approval of the WRI Track One Coal Lease by the Secretary of the Interior or her designee, the tribe will receive an additional bonus payment in the amount of one-point-eight million dollars. And whereas the Rocky Mountain Regional Director Bureau of Indian Affairs has notified the tribe that he intends to approve the WRI Track One Coal Lease on or about September twenty-seven, two thousand and thirteen, subject to certain non-subjective clarifications in the WRI Track One Coal Lease as described in the attached clarification letter from the chairman of the pro-tribe concurred in by the president of WRI, the quote clarification letter unquote. Now therefore, be it resolved by the co-trival legislature and the co-trival executive branch, Section One, the amended 2013 fiscal year budget for the expenditure of pro-trival revenue as approved by CLB twelve dash oh five is hereby approved as follows. A, the pro-trival revenue budget for coal, oil, gas, bonus, and leases is increased by the amount of three-point-old million dollars to reflect receipt of the escrow bonus payment and the additional bonus payment due upon secretarial approval. B, expenditure of the three-point-old million dollar additional bonus payment is authorized as follows. Increase account number six-zero-two-zero-zero salaries by three-point-old million dollars. Section Two, the attached clarification letter to the WRI Track One Coal Lease and Exploration Agreement is hereby ratified and approved. Section Three, this resolution is effective immediately upon approval by the legislative branch and the chairman of the executive branch.
Okay, you have a thirty-minute presentation. If less or not, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just address the status of this, if I could, right now. First of all, we expect approval by the regional director today, or perhaps tomorrow, but actually, today, I'm thinking, Westmoreland, God, its corporate paperwork is far on, and we also submitted the clarification letter last week. The passage of this will assure that OST will credit the bonus payments to the proper general fund account for the tribe when those go through the federal system. Westmoreland's standing by upon receipt of a PDF of the, of the regional director's approval letter. Westmoreland's standing by to wire transfer the one-point-eight million dollars to OST for the tribe. And also, we have a joint instruction letter that the chairman will be signing along with Westmoreland, faxing to First Interstate Bank, so that the escrow account would also disperse that one-point-two million plus any interest it's earned since last March to OST for the tribe. Finally, I would note that this clarification letter that you've all received, and I know there were eleven committee members last Thursday who looked at all that, would correct a couple of typos in the agreement. It provides that exploration results will go directly to the BLM along with BIA and the tribe. Has some clarifying language regarding cultural protection in both the lease and exploration agreement that we thought would be advisable considering the sensitivity of that issue up at the Absalica Mine. And probably most importantly, it just reduces the size of the lease boundaries to better coincide with the boundaries of the Rosebud, McKay seams of coal, which was all of releasing to Westmoreland, not the Robinson seam. The previous description was based on the outcrop line of the Robinson seam, which is much larger than the other. So with that, the approval by the legislative body today, again, would assure that the bonus payments are credited to the proper tribal account in an efficient manner, and would ratify and approve the clarification letter and make the Track One lease a piece of business, subject to all EIS and other work to allow ground destroying activities to develop at least. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, anything you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thirty-minute presentation, we'll give the budget modification, 2013 budget.
Modification, 2013 budget, now, Westmoreland, three million, we need a little too spoke to all the expenses that we needed to pay, that two-point-three, in the last fiscal year, advanced it from BIA, and IHS, there's a total of twelve million that we had to, you know, pay back from the 2013 budget. And again, Carla's owning a spreadsheet, we should have where that money should be going here to get a 2013 amendment, but a three million, we have from Westmoreland to cover that expenses for 2013. And again, modification, if we could use that for 2013 budget, then if I could have two more, a couple of days to look at, go through the numbers for the 2014 budget, again, one-point-five, it's coming from Cloud Peak next fiscal year. I need to add that, and then the rest will go away, they have to add those on. Kathleen, they're working on that, and we'll try to get to, get it back in here in the next couple of days. They're working on amendments to the 2014 budget, one-point-five, and Farm and Ranch Fire, search and rescue, billboard it, but we should, budget, modify, to accommodate those, I need a couple of days, I need three million from Westmoreland to modify this year's budget. I think the three million is to cover the expenses we're paying in the past, and how we're just covering that constant, probably.
Okay, we'll move on to, again, the committee, revenue committee, recommendation, we go down, again, last Thursday, September twenty-sixth, meeting started at ten fifteen. The senators that were present was Gerald Stork, Senator Reilberg, Secretary Opro, Senator Covers Up, Senator Coyote Runs, Senator Hux, Senator DeTrane, Senator Alvin, Senator Nod Gray, Big Horn, Senator Crocodarm, Senator Purdy-Paint, and you, Coke, but, so, the amendment, we went through the discussion, we went through all the discussion on the purpose behind the modifying to the three million Westmoreland coal bonus. And that morning, I believe CPA Carla was here, as well as the other ones, I believe, Marlon, so they explained what the, what they wanted to do with that three million that went to the salaries. That way, we'll take care of the audit report, the audit findings, the three million that would cover, and we don't have to do that for the next year. And so, the senators that were there, at the end of the day, you know, they were all in agreement. And we also had the letter of attachment from Jerome Gellisby from Westmoreland, Inc. And so, the vote was, and we also said, Bill, read into record the approval of the minutes to the fiscal 2013 pro-trival budget to authorize expenditure of the three million bonus from the- uh, to the fiscal twenty thirteen for co-tribal budget to authorize expenditure of the three million bonus from the Track One Coal Lease. And then, uh, so the vote went as Senator, Senator Coversup motion to adopt and read into record proposed twenty thirteen budget modification and, uh, and, and, and was an amendment with an attachment letter from Jerome Galisby as written by Attorney Bill Watt. And the second was Senator Bryce Hux, question was by Senator Coyote Runs. And this motion was for the approval for, by the full legislature for a special session on Monday, September thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. And Senator Coversup, like I said, reiterating, made the motion seconded by Senator Hux and questioned by Senator Coyote Runs, and the consensus of the vote was eleven yes, zero no, and zero abstain. So, and this is for the approval by the full legislature for the proposed, uh, twenty thirteen budget modification. So that was the meeting. So at this time, I'm opening up the floor, uh, for debate on this proposed legislation. Okay, first call. Second call. Okay, Senator Not Afraid, uh, Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body, honored guests, executive branch officials. I believe in in the spirit of cooperation, just like Senator Alden from Big Horn discussed or mentioned earlier, I got, um, we're walking on new ground, I got, we're, uh, moving forward in the spirit of cooperation of both branches. Uh, never before have I seen legislation presented where the legislative branch was, um, invited vice versa to work together. Um, in times past, but Speaker, uh, Jesus may forgive you, but the Crows never forget. Uh, in times past, we weren't included in new money. We were never included in, in, uh, bonus payment discussions. The executive branch and past administrative activities under the executive branch authority would move forward on expenditures, interpreting the Constitution to state that uh, we don't need approval for new money, let's just move forward. And we were never included in the process. While in the spirit of cooperation, Mr. Speaker, both executive and legislative branches have been coming together, meeting during Revenue Committee and coming, uh, into one accord. I know there's some discrepancy on, uh, uh, the comments made this morning with due respect to Senator Stewart, I, I understand the frustration at that end. Um, and, and it's noted. Uh, yet, I believe, uh, that, uh, in the spirit of cooperation, I do agree with Senator Alden that, uh, the, the, the the actions taken by both branches are historic. And in support of the, the amendment to the two thousand thirteen budget, and I will vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments on the debate portion? Okay, Senator Stewart.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, Mr. Chairman, members, guests. Um, I know this is going to be something that's pertaining to the budget as well. And I just want to, um, in reference to, to the two thousand fourteen, um, as well as the, this amendment, um, or the passage of this, the direction of it, I just wanted to state that right now, if we're, while we're still in session, but if we're to bring the two thousand fourteen out to identify the areas that Carla has questions on, would this body be willing to entertain passage and amend those areas at a different date is what I want to suggest. Mr. Speaker, Secretary members.
Uh, right now, we will get to that, but the twenty thirteen budgets, that's not remain at this time. We've got to stay with the twenty thirteen budget that's on the floor right now, we can answer that, that's not germane. So, but is a good question, is a fair question?
I hope, I just wanted to put it out there.
All right.
No taking.
So, the floor is still open for debate on the twenty thirteen. Go ahead, Senator Alden.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body, uh, this time I'd like to make a motion to cease debate.
Okay, there's a motion to cease debate, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Senator Shane, question, Senator Reilberg. All those in favor of ceasing debate and going into the amendments? Our final roll call.
Wave a second.
Waving, waving.
Second reading.
Waving, second reading.
Oh, waving, second reading, and going to our final roll call, okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, I believe it's unanimous, sixteen zero zero. Okay, the motion on the floor to roll call vote, uh, for passage of the twenty thirteen budget modification. We'll start with Senator Toolig in Black Lodge.
Two yes, Black Lodge, yes.
Pretty Pink, yes.
Stewart, yes.
Shane Reno, yes.
Other men said Reno, yes.
Coyote Runs, yes, Reno.
Not Afraid, yes.
Cover Your Life, yes.
Alden Big Horn, yes.
Not Afraid, yes.
Bruno, yes.
DeTrane, Arrow Creek, yes.
Reilberg, not a few, yes.
Stewart, not a few, yes.
Cool Crow, yes.
Uh, goes ahead, yes. Sixteen zero zero. Okay, uh, this time, the motion for the budget modification has passed sixteen zero zero. So, good job. That's a record time. Yeah, again, does the sponsor want to say a few words? Recognizing on the floor, then we can, I believe, uh, move to the, uh, the agenda, next agenda.
I got, in, in many, uh, uh, company or, you know, clean audit to the in, uh, bowish, bowish guy, co, co-one lady, we're in the clean audit, uh, the mom, she will, uh, pass maybe, uh, three, four years, the clean audit that they did, uh, I mean, again, ma- management grab the budget and, uh, again, uh, bringing in everything in, in the black, that's what we're shooting for, and I thank you for for that amendment to the two thousand thirteen budget, and I know, uh, Bill and Jay will be working on so that we can sign it before the end of today, so.
Oh. Good, okay, any more comments from the body? If not, we will go to the next agenda, which is the, which is, oh, Secretary O'Crow.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I just wanted to point a clarification in regards to the item just passed. Uh, when we had that revenue meeting Thursday, one of the passes handed out, uh, the attachment as amendment, uh, the, the letter to Jerome Galisby. If it wasn't on your desk, uh, on your chair, uh, you'll have to excuse me because I made the copies and gave it to Marlin to hand out, and I don't, I'm not sure if he handed them all out, uh, I should have done it myself, I apologize. But anyway, if you don't have a copy of it, uh, see me afterwards and I'll make you a copy, thank you.
Okay, that was a comment. Okay, uh, the next line, uh, agenda is the confirmation for Heather Corson. And at this time, um, it was, this, this was done through, uh, uh, Judicial Committee, uh, the Chairman is Senator Not Afraid of Big Horn. Uh, Cola, the confirmation hearing was done on Skype. And now is our second meeting on, uh, doing the confirmation hearing on the Skype, which the camera is on the wall there, on the east wall of the building. And then our first Skype meeting we did was on, uh, economic development at that time. Because I believe, uh, Jimmy falls down, was, uh, couldn't make it. He gets, he was sick, but he still did the Skype. And you got, you got, Bill, so at this time, you need a few minutes, Senator, uh, to gather your, uh, minutes and everything, so we'll take a little, uh, two-minute break.